Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. It's Monday, May 9th. Following last week's work session on May 2nd, 2022, the Board met in executive session. And then prior to this meeting today, May 9th, the Board met in executive session. Both of those discussions were executive discussions about real estate matters. I now ask our township manager to call the roll.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here. I would ask now that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would, please remain standing.
Like a moment of silence if you would like standing up again. And this is for Mr. Bob Goh, who was a longtime resident of the Second Ward of Haverford Township. He was a volunteer firefighter at Lannark for many, many years. He rode in ambulances because he wanted to help people in the dire circumstances. He was an incredibly giving person. He was a one who worked here at the township and did his very best to make sure our township was, served the needs of everyone who lived here. He was a great family man. He was a beloved, loved his wife, who passed on before him desperately, and all of his children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. So I'd ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Bob Goh.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda as published is the appointment of the First Ward interim commissioner. I was reminded by a colleague that, as this requires official action of us on the Board, it is incumbent upon us, the Board, to invite any member of the public who would like to comment on our appointment of the First Ward interim commissioner. I will start with the left-hand side of the room. If there's anybody over here who has anything to say, we'll turn to the right-hand side of the room, if anybody would like to say anything on this topic. I will now move to that appointment, and the Board will now consider a motion to appoint someone to serve as the First Ward Commissioner.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Brian Gondick to serve as the First Ward interim commissioner until the first regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners following the November election, at which time an individual will be elected to complete the unexpired term.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second, Commissioner Quinn. Do we have any other appointments? Anybody will entertain a motion to close the nominations?
I'll make that motion to close the nominations.
And I'll second.
All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
For us now is a vote to appoint Mr. Brian Gondick as the First Ward Commissioner. Mr. Berman, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Mr. Gondick.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mr. Gondick.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Gondick.
Commissioner Wexler.
Mr. Gondick.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. Gondick.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Gondick. Mr. Gondick, if you would step forward, and if I could invite the Honorable Robert Burke also to come forward to administer the oath of office. Aye. State your name. Brian Gondick.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of Commissioner and Haverford Township.
Of Commissioner and Haverford Township.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So if we could just recess for a couple minutes, I know Mr. Gondick and his family would like to get a couple photographs. Welcome, Commissioner Gondick. We look forward to your service on this board.
Thank you very much. I look forward to serving on this board.
It is now, we now move to the Citizens Forum. Twenty minutes for registered speakers, and then twenty minutes for anyone who'd like to speak, twenty minutes total for anyone who'd like to speak on an agenda item. We do ask that our speakers confine themselves to three minutes or less.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we change the order of the items tonight and move up item number four to number three, and remove, pull number three back, that we can.
That makes perfect sense.
Let's second.
Somebody second it. All in favor of Commissioner Wexler's motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, folks, sit tight. So we will now move to proclamations. I will invite Chief Viola and Deputy Chief Hagan to the front of the room.
Sergeant Zambon and Officer McLaughlin, can you come forward, please?
Commissioners, as you know, we started last year to honor our police officers once a year. We used to give the citations, the commendations, that roll call for the officers, but we felt that we wanted the community to see what our police officers do on a daily basis. So this is Police Week, and once again, we'll honor our officers with the commendations that they have done with the above and beyond.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. This is a life-saving commendation, and this is for Sergeant Zambon and Officer McLaughlin. I'm sorry, I get it. Commendations awarded to an officer who performs lifesaving act under extraordinary circumstances, whereas the officer took direct and immediate positive action to preserve the life of another human being who was in danger of dying. The action taken by the officer did prevent the loss of human life, and the circumstances of the act were such that any delay in providing assistance would in all probability have resulted in a person's death. On Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at approximately 18:43 hours, Haverford Police responded to, I'm going to leave names and addresses out for obvious reasons, to a first-floor apartment in a uniblock at Darby Road for a domestic with weapons. Delcom was our dispatch center advised that a 15-year-old male with a history of mental illness and violence tendencies took a knife into the bathroom. Upon police arrival, officers made contact with his mother, who advised that her son suffers from mental health issues and took a large kitchen knife, locked himself into the bathroom after a family dispute. Officers then entered the residence and attempted to make contact with the person through the locked bathroom door. After several attempts, voice contact was made with him, but he was not talking aloud enough to understand what he was saying. Officer Murray then utilized a shove knife to open the locked door and observe the person sitting on the toilet seat with a large knife to his throat. After several minutes of talking to him, he continued to be noncompliant, refused to put the knife down. While speaking with him through a crack in the door, Officer McGuire could see that he was bleeding, but was unsure of where the blood was coming from. At that time, Sergeant Zambon advised him that the police would open the door in order to help him and communicate with him more effectively. Officer McGuire then opened the door, and Officer Murray quickly moved in with the taser to tactically advantageous position outside of the bathroom door, while Officer McLaughlin acted as a cover officer. Police continued to attempt to de-escalate the situation, but he began pushing the knife harder against his throat. Based on his noncompliance and fearing that he would harm himself without immediate police intervention, Sergeant Zambon and Officer Murray deployed his taser and provided the opportunity to disarm him of his knife. Officer Murray then deployed the taser, and Officer McGuire immediately ran to the bathroom and was able to recover the knife from his hand. He was removed from the bathroom and seated on a bed to wait EMS at medic arrival. Medic 103 then arrived at the location and evaluated him. He did suffer from minor self-inflicted wounds to his throat and wrist, and he was transported to Crozier Chestover for a mental health evaluation. Officers McGuire, McLaughlin, Murray, Sergeant Zambon took immediate and positive action to preserve the young life of another human being, and any delay in their actions may have led to his death. Their actions are exceptional and beyond the requirements of routine duty. Officers McGuire, McLaughlin, Murray, and Sergeant Zambon are accredited to themselves, Haverford Township and the Haverford Township Police Department. For their actions, they are hereby awarded the official commendation of a lifesaving event. Congratulations.
Officer Hal? On Monday, August 30th, 2021, seventeen hours in the morning, I'm sorry, seven sixteen hours in the morning, Haverford Township responded to the complaint for a decent act in progress. Neighbors yelling and screaming within his residence all morning long, and when the complainant went outside to walk her dog, the subject exited his residence fully naked and began to yell at her. Officer Todd, Officer Hatton, were the first officers on the scene upon arrival. It was apparent that the subject was experiencing some type of unknown psychotic episode. He would not let the police inside the house. He was naked, screaming, throwing things about the residence, and punched through the front door. Sergeant Reynolds was summoned to the scene, and it began evident that the subject would not listen to police, permit police to enter the residence to check on his well-being. It was determined the best course of action for the police was involuntary commit the subject. Lieutenant Dolan, Detective McLaughlin arrived on the scene. Police utilized numerous means of getting through to the subject with all negative results. Negotiators Pedrojian and Hal were summoned to the scene in repeated attempts to persevere, and were able to convince the subject to come out, to allow the police to enter the residence and handcuff him without struggle. Prior to this, police appeared to be an impassioned force likely would, likely be need to be used. This allowed him to be transported to Brimar Hospital so he could receive proper treatment. Sergeant Pedrojian and Officer Hal used their negotiated training to avoid imminent violent struggle. Their commitment and utilization of the hospital's negotiating training resulted in peaceful resolution of otherwise chaotic situations. Sergeant Pedrojian and Officer Hal's actions were accredited to themselves in the Haverford Police Department, and they were awarded the commendation of merit. Officer Patrick, Officer McDonald, Officer Pelosi, and Officer Vernaccio, please come forward.
Distinguished unit commendation. On Thursday, July 29th, 2021, at 04:45 hours, the Haverford Township Police Special Weapons and Tactics Team responded to assist Fallcroft, Sharon Hill, and Darby Borough Police Departments, as well as the FBI, U.S. Marshals, New Jersey State Police, SEPTA, or SEPTA SWAT, Delco Emergency Response Team, Region One, Central Delco SWAT Team, Delco Emergency Services, Darby Township, Clifton Heights, Glen Olden, Lansdowne, East Lansdowne, Alden, Upper Darby, Aston, and Upper Chichester Police Departments, in executing search warrants at multiple addresses. The search warrants were in relation to recent violent gang activities in Collingdale, Fallcroft, and Sharon Hill. Tactical teams were issued informational packets for target locations so multiple warrants could be simulated or simultaneously be served in a coordinated effort at 0600 hours. Members of Haverford SWAT Team were tasked with serving two warrants in Darby Township. After receiving information packets on both locations, a tactical entry plan was developed, and at 0600 hours, the first search warrant was executed. This location was known to be the residence of, disregard that, who is known, a subject who is known, who is a known violent offender with a history of weapons and active arrest warrants for homicide. Entry was made, and officers cleared the residence, detaining three occupants, one of which was the intended subject, who was located in a bedroom with a rifle lying next to him on the floor. The property and occupants were secured at 0614 hours and turned over to the search team to execute search warrant. The SWAT team then cleared and immediately began to develop a tactical entry plan. Sorry, boss. At 0632 hours, entry was made. The residence was cleared with nine occupants being detained. Once the property and occupants were secured, it was turned over to the search team to execute the search warrant at 0647 hours. Based on their actions in the morning of July 29th, serving two high-risk warrants for known violent offenders, the listed officers are being awarded distinguished unit citation. Steve Lane, John Coxhead, Lawrence Howard, Christopher Viola, Corey Watkins, Andrew Jones, Colin Patrick, Pete Pelosi, Anthony Patterson, Brian McDonald, Dave Vernaccio, Matt Murray, Stephen Ross, and Dr. Alvin Wang.
Commissioners and the audience, that every year, the sergeants during one of our meetings, we vote on the Officer of the Year. Last year was a tough year. We lost Sergeant Kevin Redding due to COVID complications. With much discussion, the sergeants took a vote, and Sergeant Redding was voted to be the Officer of the Year. So we will present that tonight to his family, who are here with us, Donna Redding, Katie, and Kevin.
Thank you, Chief.
Over the past two years, over the past two years, the world has dealt with a pandemic never before seen in any of our lifetimes. Tens of millions of families worldwide were affected in one way or another. The Haverford Township Police family, unfortunately, was no exception. In early December of 2021, 27-years veteran sergeant, Kevin Redding became ill with COVID-19. On December 20th, 2021, Sergeant Redding passed away from complications of the virus. His loss was felt by many, especially his wife Donna, son Kevin, and his daughter Katie. Sergeant Redding earned many commendations, which included two heroism commendations, six unit commendations, one merit commendation, and now two Officer of the Year commendations. Kevin was knowledgeable in all aspects of police work. He always had his finger on the pulse of the community. Numerous members of the community had fond memories of interacting with Kevin. Kevin was a quiet mentor to many young officers under his command. He excluded a calm and confident demeanor when dealing with chaotic situations. He was often recognized, he often recognized the potential in young officers and encouraged them to grow professionally. He did this selfishly for the betterment of the individual officers and the department as a whole, not for personal recognition or accolades. Kevin was also immensely devoted to a family man who worked hard for the police department and his own business off-duty to give his family the best life. Kevin's loss is deeply felt by this department, the community, and most of all, his wife Donna, son Kevin, daughter Katie, along with its extended family. Kevin will be greatly missed but never forgotten. We wish him eternal peace in the name of Sergeant Redding, this year Officer of the Year.
Chief, Deputy Chief, thank you very much. And I, in addition to what has happened tonight, I would like the public to know that just today, in Harrisburg, the State Fraternal Order of Police entered Kevin's name on the wall of honor. And this week, on Wednesday, Delaware County's Fraternity Order of Police will be doing the same thing at Rose Tree Park. On behalf of all of us on this board and everybody in the township, Donna and Katie and Kevin, I just want to thank you for Kevin's service and to share, to share our sympathy and to share in your grief. Thank you.
Commissioner, can we take a minute?
Yes. We'll stand down for five minutes. I'm waiting for everybody to behave, and here we go. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are returning to the meeting. We are now on the next agenda item, which is the Citizens Forum. I'm sorry, we have one more proclamation. This will be a proclamation for ALS awareness, and this proclamation will be presented by Commissioner Quinn.
I'm proud to present this to, to people who mean a lot to, or to me, I should say. But this month is the ALS Awareness Month, and I know that many of you know that our families are real involved in the ALS charities and stuff. So I wanted to present them this proclamation here. Whereas ALS, or mybrotrophic lateral or scoliosis, is a fatal progressive neuromuscular disease that is often referred to as Lou Gehrig's disease, after the famous Yankee first baseman who tragically lost his life to this state's getting ill or illness. And whereas every nine or nine ninety or minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS, and eighty percent of ALS patients die within five years of the diagnosis. And whereas the Billy Lake Memorial ALS Research Fund was created as a tribute to, or to build Billy Lake, a young Haverford town father of four who died from ALS in 1992. And whereas since 1992, the Billy Lake ALS Research Fund has partnered with the ALS Association, the great writer Philadelphia chapter, or to organize the Billy Lake Basketball Marathon, at which several elite high school teams pick up basketball games to raise money for ALS research. And whereas over the past thirty years, the Billy Lake ALS Research Fund has raised over 600 grand for ALS research and for a Scott scholarship and built Billy's name at Monsignor Potter High School, which I'm a proud grad of. And whereas the Billy Lake Marathon is the longest-run ALS family-run event in the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved that the township of Haverford, in Delaware County, recognizes the Billy Lake ALS Research Fund for its longstanding or commitment to finding a cure for ALS, and congratulates the organization for its thirty years of operation in support of ALS research. Proclaim this ninth day of May, the township of Haverford Board of Commissioners.
Laura is yours, Dan.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge that in no way was there any nepotism for this proclamation tonight. And in fact, Commissioner Quinn is one of our biggest donors. The ALS Association is really, really proud to receive this proclamation. Haverford Town is one of the great communities, and obviously, one of our biggest supporters. Every year, we run a basketball marathon. This year, we will run the marathon on October 1st, Saturday, October 1st, and we invite everyone out. It'll be our 30th marathon, which is really a landmark event for us. So thank you very much. And we also invite the commissioners to field a basketball team if they'd like and play in the marathon. You're more than welcome. So thank you for everything.
Unless we have an ambulance. Thank you. Now we move to item, what is now item four on our agenda, which is the Citizens Forum. This is 20 minutes of registered speakers, 20 minutes of agenda items. Our first registered speaker is Ms. Becky Burnett, and speaking on the topic of 1804 Manor Road. Please come forward. Oh, you know what? Sorry. Let us turn the thing around, I mean, come up, but we're going to turn the lecture around.
He's going to give her the hand, I thought.
Need the hand. Dave, you want to try the mic?
Good evening. My name is Becky Burnett, and I live at 1804 Manor Road, and I'm here to talk about the proposed subdivision that I think you're voting on for 1801 Manor Road. So I've been to every commission meeting that has discussed this, and I'm going to just summarize what has been talked about over the last couple of months. And then I'd also like to address the comprehensive plan that I know is posted on the website that I took the time to review in its entirety. So I'm here in opposition of this subdivision. I understand that if following the codes, there's likely very little that my neighbors and I can do to stop it from moving forward, but I just hope that the commissioners will hear out our concerns and take into consideration the negative impact that we feel that this will have on our neighborhood. I think the most disappointing aspect of this entire process is one, that the individual that owns the property is not staying on property, and the developer that is proposed to develop the other property does not even live in Haverford Township. Their connection to the neighborhood is purely financial. While I understand it's within the property owner's rights to do as she pleases with her property, I know personally, if I knew that every neighborhood on the street was, I was leaving behind for a year of construction and noise and traffic and trucks, and was opposed to all of the trees being removed from the beautiful property that stand there now, I would have a hard time with my conscience being okay with the actions I was taking. The charm of our neighborhood and our street in particular comes from the conformity of the homes, the age and the character of the stone and the brick, the shared driveways that give you access to an unobstructed front porch view up and down the street, the fact that our sidewalks are never blocked by vehicles because everyone has the ability to park at the back of their driveways, the trees that bloom each spring and the pink magnolia petals that litter our sidewalks. The atmosphere of our neighborhood is the nature that these trees invite, and for me, that includes watching two hawks that reside in the pine tree at 1801 fly down my driveway to the oak at the back of our property. All of this charm is lost if this subdivision is a All of this charm is lost if this subdivision is approved. Every single thing I've mentioned is gone when this house begins to be constructed. And while none of these things might matter to Kathy or to Mr. Spazato, the developer, because they're not remaining in the neighborhood or living there, it means a lot to my family and I and to most of the neighbors on the street. I think approving this plan to continue to squeeze homes into Haver Town specifically is a mistake. I think it goes directly against what a lot of people love about this town, and it goes directly against the comprehensive plan that sits for approval. So in the comprehensive plan, I saw that the vision for Haverford Township will guide development and redevelopment to protect residential neighborhoods and to carefully manage traffic, and that's not what this subdivision will do. It also is to provide for orderly patterns of development that provide compatibility between land uses, and the proposed property line goes directly against the rest of the property lines in our neighborhood. In the section in Climate Change and the Action Plan, expand the tree planting program with an emphasis on streets that currently have the least shade, promote street tree planting along both residential and commercial properties. The intent is to reduce the need for air conditioning use, convert carbon dioxide into oxygen, and mitigate flooding. And yet, we're approving taking down these beautiful, large trees that help mitigate flooding, and most of my neighbors and myself experience flooding on a yearly basis already. Under the section of Stormwater Management, existing trees and thick understory vegetation should be preserved when possible, and the planting of new trees should be emphasized. There was a huge oak tree that was taken down last summer without permit. I understand that it was right before the heritage tree was, the whole plan was approved, but it was a huge tree that would have helped prevent runoff. There's two other huge trees that they're planning on taking down that can't be saved. Emphasize Tree Planting and Conservation Section. The goal is to have most streets, parking lots, creeks, and parks covered by a tree canopy, and yet, the canopy that oversits 1801 is being cut down with this subdivision.
Ms. Burnett, I will need you to wrap things up now.
Yeah. The major concentrations of wooded areas in Haverford are along Darby and Cobbs Creek corridors. Wooded areas are important to provide habitats and shelter for wildlife, and yet, we're taking down the shelter of the animals that I spoke of. The Historic Preservation Plan specifically mentions the attractiveness and character of Haverford. Haverford's historic character attracts many homebuyers, businesses, and customers. The craftsmanship of historic buildings cannot be replicated today. Currently, Manor Road is home to many early 1900s homes and one of the few undisrupted landscapes that still boasts cohesion in the home fronts.
Ms. Burnett, thank you.
Many buildings continue to the historic street scape along the block. I get that.
I do need you now to...
The only thing I'll say lastly is that in the survey answers, decreasing traffic congestion was over 70% of respondents, so was promoting parks and green spaces. Affordable housing was not seen as important because there's already too many people in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other registered speakers, but the next thing we have is speakers on particular agenda items. If anyone would like to speak on agenda item, I will start on the left side of the room here. Anybody in the, anybody on that side of the room? Would like to speak? Yes? Great. Well, come up to the mic. Just let us know who you are and what your topic.
My name is Doug Pittman. I live at 1809 Manor Road, and I'm speaking on the construction of 1805, I believe, Manor Road, or the...
1801?
1801, I guess, yes. I'll be quick. I have also been to every single meeting. It's really hard to not feel defeated on this because it's almost like, what's the point of going to every single meeting? All I know is, off the bat, it detracts from the neighborhood. We've only been living there for two years, but we moved there because we loved the charm. We loved the, every home was the same. It was the only street in Haver Town that we've looked at. We drove all over looking in this area, wanted to live in Haver Town. We fell over with it right away. And to be honest, we've recently been looking to move because of this. Now, we're not going to because we can't financially, but the fact that it takes away from the charm, that there's going to be a driveway in the front, which is unlike any other house, that does not match the house, the trees being taken down, environmentally speaking, sightline issues both in the backyard and the front yard, traffic, yada, yada. I can just keep going on. I can keep listing things. I don't know if that matters or not. I just hope that you are able to vote with your conscience. I do not know if you are able to. Every single committee meeting we've gone to said that they are unable to. I'm hoping that this is the, since this is the last stop, that this is the place where you can, that you can vote, knowing that it's detracting from our community, especially the neighbors in our community. And I, there was only three of us here at the very first meeting. There was at least 10 or more, and I think we've been dwindling because we've just been feeling defeated. So anyway, that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on that side of the room who'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, moving to this side of the room. Is there anybody over here on the right side of the room who'd like to speak?
Yes, I am Major H. Ross Peterson IV, United States Army Retired, and I live on Derwin Drive. The open meetings here for Commissioner occur all 12 times a year. That's it. Once a month. And you give residents 180 seconds to voice their opinions and their concerns to the township. That's rather capricious, if you ask me. I come from an organization, and Bill knows this, called the United States Army. And we don't train to time. We train to standard because proficiency at your task is a requirement to survive on the battlefield. So I think from the perspective of the residents, the commissioners must give more than 180 seconds for anyone who has a concern to be raised to the township. You only do this once a month. That's the only time they have an opportunity to raise their concerns, and I think that could be the least of your consideration to the residents of the township. Okay? You are public servants. You ran for these offices. Let's not train to time. Let's train to standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on any agenda item? Okay, we will, obviously, the issues that were raised were about 1801 Manor Road, which is going to be discussed in our agenda in a little while, a couple of things ahead of it. And Major, appreciate your comments. Thank you. We will now move on to the Bureau of Fire update.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to give the report for both March and April, as totals weren't tabulated for last month. So the March total calls for the year of fire were 83 calls. The average personnel response per call was 18 firefighters. There were 67 and a half hours committed to firefighting and 237 hours dedicated to training in March. In April, total calls were 99. The average personnel per call was 22 firefighters, 75 hours committed to firefighting, and there were 225 hours committed to training that month. In addition, companies also participated in escorting the Finland International Ice Hockey Team to the stadium in parade fashion. There were several birthday parties and smoke detector installations were completed by several companies throughout the township. And that's submitted on behalf of Chief Bill Hatton, the head of the Bureau of Fire this month, or this year.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. I now invite our township auditor to give his update.
First off, congratulations to all the officers on their awards, and also welcome to the board Brian Gondak. You'll enjoy this, but hopefully, they don't enjoy their hair too much because you're going to probably lose all of it, but don't worry, it does come back after, and those pounds do come off, too. Anyway, I have reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting, and I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. However, I also audited the 76ers for what they did against Toronto, and I still don't know what Doc Rivers was thinking when he left them beat in the game in that last game when they were up 30 with four minutes left. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you for always providing your colorful information for us. So our next, I now invite our township manager to provide his update.
Just a quick note about the building facade. As I've mentioned previously, the township superintendent of Buildings actually noticed that the building was bubbling. We barricaded the area to keep it safe, and shortly thereafter, the entire facade of the front of the building did collapse. Luckily, nobody was hurt. We've been working with our insurance folks, our legal folks, and also some engineering experts in the field of the building envelope to determine exactly what failed and how much of the building facade will need to be restored or replaced. And so we're working through that. I wanted to let everybody know that some testing took place last Thursday. When we get the results of that testing, we'll be able to go ahead and perform the repairs.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Berman?
That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. The board will now entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 11th, 2022.
Since Steve's gone, I'll do it now. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 11th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in second. Does anybody have any comments or additions or amendments or anything? Hearing none. Mr. Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Having not been at that actual meeting, I think it should abstain at this point.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Moving to nine on the agenda, the board will entertain a motion for warrant number five.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number five, 2022, totaling $4,754,021.29. General and sewer fund payroll for April 14th, 2022, in the amount of $719,297.95. General and sewer fund payroll for April 28th, 2022, in the amount of $724,468.78. General fund disbursements, number five, 2022, in the amount of $2,926,374.93. Sewer fund disbursements, number five, 2022, in the amount of $72,343.85. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number five, 2022, in the amount of $41,234.50. Capital projects fund disbursement, number five, 2022, in the amount of $32,259.47. American Rescue Plan Fund Disbursement, number five, 2022, in the amount of $222,061.55. Credit card statement ending April 27th, 2022, in the amount of $15,980.26.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda are settlements and stipulations of council with regard to specific tax appeals that have, where the township is an interested party. The board will entertain a motion.
President, motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of council in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 209 Shawnee Road, DC Folio 2203019600, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2021010062, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents, and to approve the settlement and stipulation of council in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 0 East Eagle Road, DC Folio 22030087900, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2021-010064, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents, and to approve the settlement and stipulation of council in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at 29 Bellfield Road, DC Folio 22090003300, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2021-010247, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary document, and to approve the settlement and stipulation of council in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at 319 Canterbury Road, DC Folio 22080013300, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2021-009935, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Before us is a motion to approve all four settlements. Any questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda, ordinance number P62022, amending Chapter 30, pensions and employee benefits. This is second reading.
Mr. President, I make the motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P62022, the second reading of ordinance P62022, further amending Chapter 30, pensions and employee benefits. Article 3, police pension for changes as a result of the 2021-2023 collective bargaining agreement pertaining to life insurance benefits.
Second.
This is something we've already passed once. Any questions or amendments from anybody? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item is ordinance number P72022, Parks and Recreation, 3824 Darby Road, an easement and second reading.
Mr. President, a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P72022, authorizing the township to enter an easement agreement for portions of the property located at 3824 Darby Road for the establishment of trail facilities.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is ordinance number P9 of 2022, a traffic, this is the second reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P92022, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, both sides of 800 Block of Walnut Place, from the corner of Manoa Road to a point 55 feet south thereof.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
I do have a brief question, just to make sure I'm familiar, completely familiar with this particular matter.
with this particular matter. I understand what they're trying to do, was this brought, what was the impetus, if I may ask, what was the impetus for this resolution? Was the, did the neighbors request it, or was it?
A number of neighbors in the area requested, there's a, cars were parked right at the edge of Manoa Road, so that cars coming out of Walnut were becoming, there were several near accidents because the road was so narrow at that point. So, by moving them back from the intersection, it was felt that more safely proceed, you can see a car pulling in.
Thank you for the clarification.
Actually, while you add, I mean, Chief, we already have a limitation, right? I mean, there is, from a corner, you've got a certain amount cooked into the law, right?
20 feet from the intersection, but that intersection that we're referring to, it, more and more cars started to park right close to the intersection, cars on both sides, so one coming out of Walnut had to back up for a car coming off Manoa. So, we evaluate each one of those requests, then automatically go up. We always, the commissioner sends us a request, we look at it first to make sure it's valid, because what we have been trying to do, commissioner, over the past two or three years, is to get rid of, get rid of sign glut. We have so many signs been put up over the past 50 years, that just, a lot of them don't have ordinances and don't make sense, so we're trying to follow the PEN code. So, that's where we've been for, two years now at least, I would think, right?
At least, yeah.
Any other questions or comment? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 2262, 2022, relating to county aid and liquid fuels.
President, motion to rescind Resolution 2256-2022 and adopt Resolution 2262-2022, authorizing an application to the Delaware County Council for an allocation of county liquid tax funds in 2022 for a 2022 road paving project.
I have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is a resolution, Resolution number 2263 of 2022, relates to our Back to Business Phase Two Grant Program.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the Resolution number 2263-2022, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby closes Back to Business Phase Two program as of May 31st, 2022, at 4:00 PM, further authorizes the township manager and assistant township manager/ finance director to take all actions necessary to accomplish the stated objectives of this resolution.
Second.
If I could ask our township, actually, I'm sorry, I wasn't here at last week's meeting. Was this discussed at last week's meeting?
Yes. Yeah, I think the idea is that we're gonna, we've had a number of applications, and the idea is to shut it down, and then we can reassess what we're, where we are with the American Rescue Plan funds, and then develop plans to use it moving forward, rather than leaving this open-ended, it's just a pile waiting to be given out.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next item is Resolution number 2264 of 2022. This relates to the subdivision at 1801 Manor Road.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2264-2022, that the preliminary/final plan of the subdivision for Sleep Valley Holdings LLC, 1801 Manor Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, known as DC Folio number 22-07-010100, has been submitted to subdivide an existing 12,237 square foot parcel into two lots. Lot one, it contains 6,236 square feet with the existing house to remain, and lot two, it contains 6,001 square feet with a new single-family dwelling and associated improvements. Subject property is within R4 zoning district and is located in the 7th Ward. Therefore said plans were prepared by Herbert Macoby Jr., PE Consulting Engineers and Surveyors, Inc., Brumall, PA, dated December 15th, 2021, and last revised April 4th, 2022, subject to the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Let me open the floor to discussion. Yes.
I'd like to make a comment with regards to the neighbors who came and spoke. I really appreciated them taking the time, and I think that some really important points were raised. I don't know how much it can be applied to this case, but with the comprehensive plan, we are going to be addressing some of these issues in terms of consistency with structures. I think it's possible to do this better than we have. I'm just looking here at the, the plan asks for, they're going to remove 162 inches of trees, I guess that's diameter, and you're supposed to replace with only 40 inches in diameter. However, they're replacing with, even with a revision, only 36 inches of trees. So, not to say we shouldn't go forward with this individual plan, but I think that we should address these issues more comprehensively as a township, if only, obviously to preserve our historic nature and our great neighborhoods, but also to attract families like the folks who are here. You know, one of them mentioned they were thinking about moving, and, you know, we don't want to lose families like that from the township. So, I would just encourage us to think about that as a board in the future. Thanks.
And I agree with what you said, Laura. Laura, I got lots of calls about this, and I'm one that tends to vote no on things like this with, with open space and stuff, and having seen this happen all throughout the town, it's tough to see, and I don't know what can be done, but I know the comprehensive plan will address a lot of these issues, and just like the road surfacing thing, things will be addressed in time to come, so.
Well, there is one thing the township can do. The township can do an analysis and survey of all the lots that look like this in the township. We can determine how many buildable second lots are annexed to, or may have already been subdivided, or are part of a bigger lot that can be subdivided, and the township, you know, could, the township could purchase those lots, the township could buy a deed restriction on those lots. There is, there is public action we could take, but it obviously costs money. We can, Commissioner Cavender, we can pass ordinances that establish some aesthetic consistency and different zoning regulations and different zoning classifications in different neighborhoods, and that does require, you know, does require board action. If it involves zoning, it requires public hearings. There are a number of actions we can do to address this, and the comprehensive plan is a good start toward that. We are dealing with what we have, what we've been dealing with for the 17 years I've been on this board, which is the difficult balance of the, of the rights of individual property owners, operating within the rules and the laws of our township, as well as the, you know, wants and needs and rights of its neighbors. So, these are never easy decisions. There are steps we can take in the future. We just need to understand and be aware that those, they take time, and those do have costs associated with them. No one's ever accused me of being afraid of spending money to accomplish some of the things we want to do as a township, and I would suggest, and I've been suggesting this for a number of years, that we really do seriously consider this survey of all these buildable lots that are out there, so that it won't, we don't continue some Groundhog Day exercise of having this happen every month and us ask ourselves, what can we do differently? We can survey these lots, find out how many there are, talk to homeowners, and see whether or not there's action we can take as, as a, as a government, you know, empowered to do so, or frankly, just to negotiate with people as to what we could probably do for the neighborhood. So, that's hardly an exhaustive list of what we can do, but it is a couple of things we could do in the future.
I appreciate that. I think, yeah, I think this is more of an example of what we're dealing with now than, you know, and it's something we can look at in a more strategic sort of broad way that speaks to the township's vision, so thanks for that.
The balance is, we're ruining our neighborhoods now, instead of the future. We've talked about this, we've talked about it with what he sidewalks up and new developments. We've kicked it around. I think, I feel empathy for those people. We're ruining the character of our existing neighborhoods now. I mean, I'm very familiar with Manor Road, I used to run down there, it's one of the quaintest streets in the township. I live where, street where Jerry lives, the same way. You don't need to do a survey, all you need to do is ask the three primary developers, they know every lot that they could shove a house on in this township, in every ward, and we need to protect our, we need to protect our residents, because we're letting developers ruin the character of our neighborhoods, and we need to do it, we don't need to do a study, we just need to do it now and get this thing organized and protect the people and their neighborhoods, so that we maintain the open space and the trees that we do have. We're also going to lose them to new development, so.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
One of the variants is there are partial waivers they're asking for regarding, one of the general laws of Haverford Township, and that's paragraph 160-4A, regarding the two-step review process, and I was wondering if someone might explain that a bit more before.
I'd be happy to do that. As a matter of fact, they actually don't need to request that waiver, they're entitled to that, to the combined two-step review process of preliminary and final, with larger subdivisions, with subdivisions where there's public improvements, with land development, there is a required two-step review process, which occasionally are granted waivers, but they would come before the board with a preliminary plan that's not as detailed, that would go through the same exact process, go to the planning commission, come before this board, seek approval, and then go through that whole process again with the final plan, which is more detailed and includes, you know, quite a bit more things, and have that go before the planning commission, come before this board, and be approved for the final plan. With a smaller subdivision where you're only having one lot made, actually, I think it's up to a maximum of three, you're automatically granted a simplified review process, which is preliminary, final at the same time.
In other words, because it's just one subdivision, they don't have to go through the two-step review process?
Correct.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Abstain.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb. Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
No.
Commissioner Quinn.
No.
Commissioner Hart.
No.
Commissioner Wexler.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
No.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The motion does not carry.
That is correct.
The next item on our agenda is Resolution number 2265, 2022, premium pay frontline township employees.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2265, 2022, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves premium payments or benefits to eligible township employees with regular in-person work-related interactions or regular physical handling of waste materials during the mandated stay-at-home order from March 23rd, 2020 through June 4th, 2020, as further defined in Exhibit A.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this?
If I may, I do have a question. There is a reference to an Exhibit A. I don't actually see an Exhibit A. I'm not sure if that was something in an executive session, or?
I'm not sure why that's not in your packet, but I'd be glad to summarize it for you.
If you could, please.
The program is intended, as permitted by the American Rescue Plan Act, to provide premium pay, or in our case, benefits, for those employees who are frontline employees who had regular in-person work-related interaction with the general public, it'll be folks like the police department, or those who had handled waste materials during that stay-at-home order. And our entire public works department at the time was collecting trash, so that we could get that done. Now, all these employees, at the time, you take yourself back to that period of time in 2020, had no idea what they were getting themselves into, didn't even really know how the virus was transmitted, and so, this, during that stay-at-home order, this gives them the opportunity to earn a $2,500 premium pay, one-time payment, and that's for anybody who earned below a threshold that was established by the American Rescue Plan Act. Anybody who earned more than that threshold would earn four days of compensatory time, and that's the benefit I was referring to.
Okay, and this was funding that came through federal programming?
This is funding that came through the American Rescue Plan Act, and the framework for this funding was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in 2019, or, I'm sorry, 2020 or 2021. I can't remember exactly when you approved the framework, and so, this is merely implementing that framework in greater detail.
Thank you for clarifying.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Sorry, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda, Resolution number 2266, Senior Initiative Phase One.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2266, 2022, authorizing the opening of the Senior Initiatives Phase One Grant Program, restricted to not-for-profit and commercial entities, with the focus of developing programs and resources to identify and mitigate the effects of social isolation among senior citizens living in Haverford Township.
Second.
Was this discussed last week?
Yes.
It was. Mr. President, I would like to make a comment regarding the resolution.
Yes.
I wish to express my unencumbered support for Phase One of the Senior Initiatives Grant. It's clear that this is needed, as older adults have disproportionately been impacted by the pandemic, and I just feel it's important that we use township resources as we have available to provide opportunities for social engagement for older adults. The language of the resolution cites potential for round two of Senior Initiatives Grant, that that will be considered. Recognizing that Phase One of the program is limited in its scope, I'd love to see a second round that allows us to expand the criteria to allow more organizations that are serving older adults to apply. I'd also love to see that the criteria be expanded to allow organizations to use their creativity to pilot innovative programs and projects that serve our older adults. I will be supporting this resolution tonight, and hope that we'll consider expanding it in the future, and I just also wanted to thank our assistant township manager, Amy Cuthberton, on her hard work on this grant program. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We now move to contract awards. The next item is Public Works Department and a contract for fuel oil.
Mr. President, make a motion to award the number-two fuel oil contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne, Indiana, in the amount of $4.72, $4.72.43100 per gallon, submitting the only responsible bid.
Second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. I now, I'm, I am informed that we need to postpone the award of the next contract on the agenda, so the board will entertain a motion to remove this item from the agenda or to table it for another meeting.
Move the table.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? The matter is tabled to a future meeting. Next on the agenda is continuation of Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. This gives anybody in the audience the opportunity to get up and speak, not strictly confined to what was on our agenda tonight, but anything they would like to discuss. I will turn to the left. Anybody on the left side of the room would like to speak on any topic? Yes, sir.
You won't need the big gavel this week. Brian Ramona with the Ninth Ward, thank you for the opportunity. Just three quick things. First, last month, I did not get an opportunity to publicly thank Chief Viola. We had an issue with a stop sign on our street, which I had brought up several months ago, and he promised me he'd have it done the next day. Literally did have it done the next day. We had a brand-new sign. Now, if we can only get people to use it, that's the neat trick. Quick aside to that, last week, somebody came barreling down the street in a van, and I looked at him and I went like this, and I pointed at the sign. He stopped, reversed, rolled down his window. He was a police officer from another borough, and he looked at me and said, "Was that a stop sign?" It's just only so much you can do. It's just one of those things. Second, I want to thank Commissioner Forstie-Grupp for attending our Historical Commission meeting last month. It was great to see you there, and, and thank you for your input and for your feedback to what we're trying to do, and hopefully, we'll see you again at a future meeting, maybe even next week. Third thing is, I just want to give a shout out. We have a ton of athletes that come through the high school, Haverford High School, and some have done some really good things. I wanted to give an opportunity. I became, one of my 15 jobs was doing public address for Drexel Lacrosse this year. Drexel Lacrosse graduated a young man named Jack Farrell, who was a star athlete at Haverford High School, graduated several years ago. He finished his fifth season, his, his senior season at Drexel, is one of their top defensemen, has played for the team for, for many years, and was also drafted by the Philadelphia Wings in professional lacrosse, and may very well after he graduates with his degree in sports management, which I believe he may have already graduated this week or next, and go on to play professional lacrosse. And the Farrell family has had several athletes come through the high school, so I just wanted to give a public acknowledgement to Jack and his family, his younger brother Billy. They've done great things, and we have tons of other young men and women who've come out of the high school, who've gone on to do great things in college, and just every once in a while, I think it's good to hear about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the room who'd like to speak? Yes, please.
Susanna Baruko. I apologize that I missed the Historical Commission meeting, but I hopefully will catch you the next time. I wanted to follow up on what was said about 1801 Manor Road, which I found a very interesting discussion, and I wanted to remind the board that you do have some control over what happens in communities, and that is the Historic Preservation Ordinance that you all passed. Part of what that ordinance is about is protecting historic character, which is what many of the neighbors, or several of the neighbors, mentioned. I think the woman who spoke, I forget her name, but she mentioned that all the houses were built around 1900, very typical for Haverford Township, which was largely developed around the turn of the century and into the 20th century. So that's something that's already on the books, and even properties that are not listed on the Historic Resource Survey that come under the ordinance, if a property is, if a subdivision is proposed within, I can't remember if it's 100 feet or 500 feet of a historic resource, the Historical Commission has an opportunity to review that subdivision. And part of our review looks at how the new construction fits in with the existing neighborhood. So there is something on the books already for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you for that reminder. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any topic? Major?
Yes, Major Peterson, again. Point of clarification. We, we had a very distraught woman who was speaking about what she thought was the destruction of her neighborhood. And the president of the Board of Commissioners did give her more than 180 seconds, three minutes. But this is something that's very concerning to this woman. At around the four-minute mark, the president's asking her to wrap it up. Hey, you're beyond your three-minute time. I really think some consideration should be given there. Let her speak her entire dialogue. What is it, more than, maybe more than five more minutes? All right? Maybe 10 minutes? If it's 15 minutes, this is a woman who's concerned about her neighborhood. We had Ms., Ms. Cavender. She raises a valid point, some concern. Unfortunately, that woman's not here. She left, virtually in tears, because of the 180-second rule. It's ridiculous. Here, the citizen's out. We pay the taxes, all right? Government's supposed to work for us, all right? We don't work for you. You work for us. There is something you can do, and you can always, step one, listen to the citizens. Let them have their voice. And if that requires more than five minutes, then that's what it should be. There was a gentleman who spoke about the township's decision to no longer plow his street. He was not limited to three minutes, and rightly so. His street, he had lived on that street for about 24 years. What a surprise. Township tells me that all the residents are going to have to pony up and pay for plowing themselves. It's ridiculous. I'd be ashamed if I were a Board of Commissioner and that happened in my township, but that's just me, all right? Now, you gave him more than 180 seconds, and rightly so. Give the consideration to the citizens that want to speak, all right? They've taken the time out of their day to come here, so let them have their say. That's more than 180 seconds? Let them have it. That woman was very torn up. She sees the destruction of her neighborhood, and she sees an unsympathetic Board of Commissioners because they impose that 180-second rule. So it's absolutely ridiculous. Mr. President, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You really should. You come off like a horse's patoot, and it doesn't really build goodwill for those in the township. They don't think highly of the Board of Commissioners when you act that way. Build some goodwill. Be willing to hear people. I know I've had more than 180 seconds here, but I think it's on the benefit of all the citizens of, of the township. Drop the 180-second rule. Let people speak, all right? Train to standard, not to time, all right? You know, if time's, if time's critical to you, then just stand up and leave. We'll understand how much time is critical to you when you just walk off your Board of Commissioner duties. Just stand up and leave. It'll help you in the next election, all right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Take care.
For any of the public who may be confused as to the reception that Ms. Burnett got at this board, I do want to note for the record that the motion failed by a vote of seven to two, so there was some sympathy on this board. I would say an overwhelming show of it for Ms. Burnett's comments. And horse body parts aside, it, it is my duty to fairly run this meeting for everybody who speaks, and I will take it up myself with Ms. Burnett if she feels she was treated poorly. I, but I stand by our rule and I stand by my conduct, and please, sir.
Vote was six to one abstent, one abstention.
Oh, all right. I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarification there, Commissioner Quinn. Yes?
Ryan Friend, 200 block of Brooklyn Boulevard.
Yes.
Two things I'd like to point out real fast. The first was, Major Peterson stated 180 seconds. It's a 20-minute session, correct?
Yes.
She was the only registered speaker.
Yes.
I get what, I get what you're saying.
Fair point.
180 seconds, but she's the only registered speaker.
I appreciate your point, friend. It's a good point.
She should have some time to speak. Second thing, you can correct me if I'm wrong once again, the 500 block of Glendale Road, where the old recreation building was.
Yes.
That was sold to developers by the township, correct?
I, yes, I believe, but I'm sorry.
Yes, it was.
I don't know the answer to that question.
So I like that the sympathy was seen tonight with regards to Manor Road, and I know that there's a lot of newer commissioners here, especially you, Mr. Gondek, you know, welcome, Commissioner Gondek. Where was that sympathy then? Every day I drive down Glendale Road, I look at this house, it just looks so out of place, and it's all over the place, too. And, you know, I'm younger, obviously, but, you know, this place still means something to me. I'm the third generation in Havertown, and I'd like to see it stay that way and not be taken over by, you know, developed houses. I like the, the old-fashioned charm, especially of Commissioner Quinn's Seventh Ward where I live. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you, man. Friend. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? At this stage, we will move to new business. Is there any new business that any of our board members would like to propose? Hearing none, I will move to other business. Mr. Gondek, to the extent that you have not seen this in action, this is the time where each commissioner can speak of any issues that are specific to the ward or on their mind, or anything they would like to raise to the board or to the public's attention. You have the benefit of being in the first ward, and we go numerically starting with one, so you get to go first.
Well, I will say that I have no announcements to make at this point. I'll have some to, I'll make, I'll make up for it extra at the next meeting. Just to say briefly, thank you to the commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to fill the remainder of Steve's term until the special election in November. I do appreciate it. I do look forward very much to working with my fellow commissioners in doing good things on behalf of the township and the citizens of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondek. Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, just a couple days after a draft of the Supreme Court opinion on the case of Thomas E. Dobbs, State Health Officer of the Mississippi Department of Health and All Petitioners versus Jackson Women's Health Organizations and All, I was in Washington, DC. I was chaperoning a group of 64 junior girls from the school where I work, where I teach English. After arriving in DC, our first agenda item was to let the girls visit the monument, the Jefferson, the Lincoln, the Franklin Delano Roosevelt, the Martin Luther King Jr. memorials. All of these memorials dedicated to celebrating and teaching that the United States is founded on the principles that each person has individual rights and liberties to self-determination. Throughout our history, our constitution has been amended to recognize the rights of more and more of its citizens. The Thirteenth Amendment formally abolished slavery. The Fourteenth Amendment established African-Americans as equal citizens of the United States. The Nineteenth Amendment gave women the right to vote. Then, in 1973, the Supreme Court ruled that the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution protects a pregnant woman's liberty to choose whether or not to have an abortion without excessive government restriction. In other words, women were given the protection of the Constitution to decide whether and when they would have a child. As I watched my students excitedly tour the monument, I admired their energy, their confidence, their independence, and I remembered the words of Franklin Delano Roosevelt, which I had read, quote, "freedom of speech, freedom of worship, freedom from want, and freedom from fear," end of quote. And I thought that these young women have grown up fear, uh, grown up free from a fear that women felt until 1973, and it appears will soon fill again in a few months. I have always taught my students that they should think for themselves, that they should make their, that they have the ability to make their own decisions, that they are in control of their own fate, that they can choose what they want to study in college, they can choose their profession, they can choose where they will live, they can choose whom they will love, they can choose. But now, a most personal and intimate and fundamental choice may be taken from them, a choice that they have assumed would always be in place for them, a constitutional right to bodily autonomy, which they have had their entire lives. Indeed, a constitutional right that I and 26,000 other women living in Haverford Township have. I am very afraid for what may happen, and I want to acknowledge that in my comment because the young people that I see should have a right to control their future. Thank you.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp, I look forward to being an ally and supportive in any way possible over the next couple months, ten years. Couple of announcements. One, I do want to thank everyone in town who was a part of the Haverford Binland Hockey Exchange. Program went off well. You know, there were some kids running around my backyard that connects to a neighboring hockey player, and it looked like they were all getting along extremely well despite any language differences or barriers, and from all accounts, a very successful program for the, for the stadium, and was a, was a good reflection on our town. So it required a lot of volunteer hours. I also saw some exhausted parents at the end of the week that they were, it looked like they had been burning it at both ends. Our Haverford Recreation Department has their Sunset Trail Running Series that starts, again, this year, the last Wednesday in May, June, and July. First one will be May 25th, 2022. It occurs at the crack along the trails. Great time. Commissioner Quinn promised that he would run the June one. He's in training.
What?
And then also, if anybody who have driven down Eagle Road, the Fun Fair was back last week. They had two successful nights. Unfortunately, the rain wiped them out a couple, a couple nights on Friday and Saturday. Because of the rain, they are going to be open on Tuesday, so not previously scheduled. You have another opportunity to ride on the Ferris wheel on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and hopefully Saturday this week. So hopefully, people can go out and enjoy themselves. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. Discover Haverford is responding to a call from businesses in the region for qualified employees and is hosting a jobs fair Monday, May 16th. There will be a number of employers on hand ready to offer jobs to folks, and many of the positions offer benefits, family sustaining wages, and opportunities for growth. June 10th through 12th is the Curtis Cut Match at Marion Golf Club. This is a USGA event and three-day match play event featuring female amateurs from the US and Great Britain. In case you're having flashbacks from the US Open, I think it was, that came through, this is a much smaller event. It's actually open to the It's actually open to the public. They're going to offer some kids programming. There will be concessions. They just ask that you sign up on their website under the spectator section. And the other thing to note is that Ardmore Avenue between Havertown and Darby, Gulfview Road from Ardmore to Sunnybrook and Golf House Road from Ardmore to College will be closed the entire weekend. And our police department will be on site to assist. For the first time since 2019, Havertown Spring Fest Musical Festival returns May 14th. That's a Saturday. And Cooperstown Elementary's Highland Fling fundraiser is Saturday, May 22nd at the Cooperstown Elementary. And all those funds raised will go to the PTO. As a board, our public meetings are meant to ensure that we hear from as many members of the community as possible in an open citizen forum. During the March 14th public meeting, the public discussion did not meet basic standards for respect that we should require as a board. At that time, one audience member singled out another, yelling directly into her ear in response to her public comment. Aggressive bullying behavior and language is unfortunately all too common in our public debate. It is inappropriate in this room. And I want to apologize to any individual who felt uncomfortable. This is a public meeting of our township and is our responsibility to facilitate respectful debate on behalf of residents. I also want to agree with Commissioner Forresty Grub's comments, of course. And as she made clear, I really can't emphasize how important the 2022 elections are to all of us. Just as a little flag, in Pennsylvania, when an if, rose overturned immediately, a 1993 law will go into effect that married women have to get permission to obtain an abortion. And that's immediate. So elections have consequences. Vote on May 17th in the state's primary and in the general election in November. And to be safe, your mail-in ballot should be in the mail or in the township's drop box by May 10th tomorrow. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
Okay. Kevin, if, like if I run, just like the EMS team there just says that's not going to end real well, so.
Well, they're going to be busy with our basketball squad. We better get some neighboring township to show up.
And I would also like to say that maybe we could explore to add time to the people that speak to have it be five, five or five, 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 five minutes long. I know there's some, some towns that don't have limits. I think it's, it's good to have some form of a limit. But I think five minutes might be more, more fair and could add some time so everybody can wrap, wrap, like wrap, like wrap up. So you might want to explore that down the road. And, and the other thing I wanted to say is that the Harrod did a fest or a fest or festival will be taking place on June, June 5th down on the Carrickon Drive. And the other thing I wanted to say was I wanted to thank the Public Works Group. They helped, helped me out with a few things in my ward over the past week or two. So I, so I would like to thank, to thank them. And, and the police, I, I always have your back. You guys do, do a great, great job in this town. And it's always great to see when we honor our police every, or every May. And I think that's great. And also, this week is Stuttering Awareness Week. And I think you guys all know by now that I, that I have the cat, that, that I have, have that. And, and I like the fact that I can serve with everybody here and we can all respect that. And it's not like anything where I get extra time, not, not as much as Larry. But but my goal when I joined, joined the board was not to extend, extend, extend the meet, meet, or the meet meetings. But I just want, wanted to thank you guys all for being respectful to me with this, with, with this. Because for years I was always scared to speak in groups. And now I like to have my voice heard and like to thank you guys all. And Brian, thank you for joining, or for joining the board. I've known you a long, long time and you're going to be great on this board. So thank.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Connor, we'd be happy to give you some of Larry's time if you need it.
I'll just add to mine.
Just two announcements. The Havertown Township E-Waste Event is scheduled for Saturday, June 25th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the administration building lot. The event is for township residents only and pre-registration will be required. The registration will begin on or around May 25th. Also, would like to invite residents to, who are in town for Memorial Day to join us usually at 11:00 AM. It's to honor all those who have died in serving in their armed forces. It's usually a very moving event. And I'd invite you all to attend. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Wexler.
Yes, thank you. And Connor, thank you for pointing out National Stuttering Awareness. I'll, I'll just add that you've been, I, I know several constituents and several kids that have the same disability. And you've been, and I've pointed you out to them. Your, your confidence and your leadership is a good example for anybody to overcome that certain disability. And I thank you for, for serving as well as you do and, and being an example for young people that have the same affliction. So thank you very much for that. I'd also like to welcome Brian Gondak. Congratulations, Brian, on your unanimous and bipartisan appointment to the vacancy on the board. I think it shows the fact that both parties thought you were the best candidate in the township to fulfill that vacancy is a, a mark of your stewardship. And congratulations. And I look forward to working with you. The other thing I like to point out to the board is what I'm looking at is the trickle-down effect of Crozier Keystone Health System. As the chair of the Fire and EMS liaison to our things, we're, we're starting to see the trickle-down effect of the reduction in healthcare services by the hospital systems of Delaware County Community and Crozier Keystone, which is affecting our ambulances service to our township. So it's something that I'm pointing out now. We're going to have to take a look at it. We're working with county people on the resources. Our ambulances, which we fund and pay for, are now going to other townships more and more. And we need to start looking at this problem. I've been working with the township manager, our director of paramedics, and some of the county people that I've talked to. We just need to keep, I'm pointing it out, it's a problem. It's coming down the road. It's affecting us, going to cost us. And we just need to be aware that it's, it's coming. And we're going to have to take some action down the road. The other item is the Hilltop Civic Association, where I have my quarterly meeting with constituents is May 22nd at the Bonner Firehouse at 7:00 PM. Again, it's May 22nd, 7:00 PM. It's an open forum that I sit. That's my quarterly constituent meeting if anybody wants to attend. And then lastly, I would like to offer my congratulations to our police department for their awards. I think those awards you gave to your officers demonstrate their professionalism and also the leadership that they have in your department. So I think it's there. And then also to the family of Sergeant Redding for his award as Policeman of the Year. I think it's a great demonstration of a grateful police department and member recognition by his peers in our police department, from his fellow peers in the police department. And I, I obviously feel for the family. It was a very emotional thing. But I think it's, it's a grateful and somber recognition for not only to get it from his peers, but also for his family. So I thank you for that award and thank the other officers that voted for him and do that. I think it's a great, a great thing that they did. And for, not only for your department and his awareness of his death and contributions, but also to his family. I think it was greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Trumbeter.
Mr. President. First, I just want to express my heartfelt congratulations to Commissioner Gondak for joining the board. I look forward to working with you in the coming. Commissioner Cavender articulated well my thoughts about the March 14th meeting. But I feel the need to reiterate it, partially because of what I witnessed today. You know, it occurred to me, I've, I've been in government for over 10 years as a staffer before this, but I've seen a lot of the way that these meetings run. Went to a number of these meetings before. And I have to say that for the past couple of years, I've seen a significant change, a significant decline in decency and civility and respectfulness in the way that meetings are run. And in particular, in political spaces. And I have to say, I'm pretty concerned about seeing that trend. I believe that it's critical to our community here in Havertown Township that we set a good example by demonstrating that those values we adhere to in our board of commissioners meeting room. I applaud our president's previous statement outlining acceptable behavior during meetings. And will do my part on the board to promote civility. I believe that our community is stronger, strongest when we're working together, having respectful conversations, not name-falling, treating each other as neighbors and allies and not as adversaries. That is when real progress, I believe, is made. And the beautiful thing is that if we don't agree on the direction that our government is taking, we have the privilege and the opportunity to make our voices heard through our vote. So finally, tonight, I join my colleagues, as some of my colleagues mentioned that we have a primary election coming up. And so I want to remind you that May 17th is our primary election, where you have that opportunity to voice who you'd like to be representing you. And then we have a general election on November 8th, where you have that same opportunity. And I implore you to take that privilege seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Trumbeter. I just, just a couple of points. The first point I want to make, I want to thank the chief, the deputy chief for the presentation today. And in particular, I just want to note, we're, we're, at the end of our lives, it's, it's my faith that we're, that we're faced with the question. And that is whether we made the world a better place for our time in it. I think Sergeant Redding's commitment to our township answered that question on his final day in a very strong affirmative. And once again, I want to appreciate, I want to express our appreciation for the service Sergeant Redding provided to us and to acknowledge the terrible loss that his family felt and, and feels today. And I'm proud of the acknowledgement our police department made today and the state and the, and the county doing the same thing on his behalf as well. So thank you. Thank you for letting us be part of that and to, to ask and request happily granted that, that this could take place here in the public and in front of everybody, in front of the, the people that you serve. So thank you for that. I appreciate the comments about comments. And a very intelligent question about if it was 20 minutes, why not give Ms. Burnett all 20 minutes? I'm taking these things seriously enough that we will consider at the next work session, at least have a discussion about what, what is the basis of our, of our limitations? What is our experience? I know my own experience is 17 years of that. And see whether or not we will make changes to the rules or at least perhaps articulate better the reason for them. Commissioner Forresty Grub, I appreciate very much your comments as well as the comments of your colleagues. This is normally that time of the year, this meeting and the October meeting, I often stress the importance of, of elections now more than ever for a lot of people. This has, this issue has revealed itself to something that's going to drive people, I think, to the, to the voting booth. And it, and it should. It is crucial for us to understand the importance of our, of our legislators, the laws that they pass, the laws they consider, the laws that they don't pass. We need to not only hold candidates to standards, but we then need to hold our incumbents to those standards and ask what they are doing in order to enforce the rights that they promised or the rights that we have enjoyed in the past. So we have a chance two weeks from now to exercise that privilege that we exercise. And I encourage that we do it. And, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. And finally, I just want to highlight one very special constituent in the 6th Ward. Someone I know who decided to undertake her efforts to achieve a college degree as an adult. She began that journey in 1990. She took 18 years off while she raised a family and then returned to Villanova's College for Professional Studies. And on Friday, after 32 years of part-time school, Mrs. Holmes will receive her Bachelor of Science from Villanova University. And I just want to call her out at this meeting and tell her how proud I and her children are of her. So I am going to turn the floor over to Chief Viola, who's asked for a moment before we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wexler spoke briefly about the crisis with the medical units and what's going with Crozier Health Systems. And that affects police officers as well as the EMS units in the county. We, through Delaware County Chiefs of Police, we have been asking the county to give us help with mobile crisis unit because mental health for police officers, whilst dealing with it, is a very, very difficult situation. When a person is in crisis, they don't want to see anybody in uniform. It usually sometimes makes, escalates it. So officers are trained. But as we move forward, and for the past two years, we've been asking, and today we hosted a meeting here with Congresswoman Scanlon, where the Delaware County was awarded a $650,000 grant for mobile crisis unit response units to go with police officers during a crisis, a mental health crisis. So it's a pilot program. And through our efforts with District Attorney Stolzheimer and, and, and the Congresswoman and the Chiefs of Police, we're, we're very happy that we have this pilot program and we're going to make it work. So it would help in the mental health crisis where we're going to take them after June the 15th or 19th, we're not sure yet. But we have been, as, as Bill said, we have been talking to council extensively and they're working hard, try and get this worked out. So I just want to let you know that we did host a meeting here today. And we're very proud to announce that, you know, through the efforts, it started here at Havertown Township, we hosted it here. I'm proud to announce that we're very much a part of, of getting that grant award. So make you aware of what's going on. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for that. That is a very, very positive development. Unless anybody has anything else, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.